The regular meeting of the Hubbardston Planning Board. Planning Board meetings are broadcast live and digitally recorded. First on the agenda is public comments. Are there any comments from the public, which isn't present and we're not currently on Zoom? Or any comments from anybody on the board for anything that's not on the agenda? Right, moving down the list is minutes for acceptance. We have the minutes from September twenty first, twenty twenty three. And they've uh they've been in the drive for a little bit. Has everybody had a chance to look at those? And can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Yeah, here on the first. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Point of order.
Yep.
Can someone make a motion that wasn't in attendance at the meeting?
Yes, if they have reviewed the minutes. Yep.
Yes, they can.
Thank you. No questions.
As long as they've read it, as long as they've read it.
Yeah, they're being reviewed for acceptance instead of approval. It's subtle, but it's legally meaningful. Um.
Okay.
Oh, to uh yeah, so I amend my motion to what was the word you said?
Accept.
Accept, accept the minutes.
Yes. Alright, so hearing first and a second, um any discussion or edits on the minutes?
I don't believe so.
I went through them quite a bit to get ready for this one. They look pretty good.
Yeah, I didn't see anything wrong when I read through them.
I'll make a motion.
I already made a motion.
Oh, we already have the motion. I'm Francois. Where are you?
I seconded.
Yep, uh we're on discussion. Was there anything you saw in the minutes?
Okay.
Alright, so here are no adjustments to the minutes, calling a vote.
Shaggy, right?
One's right.
Canali, aye?
Canali, aye. The minutes are accepted. Uh moving down the agenda, we have new business. Um so first under new business is really it's a continuation of our discussion of ideas for D L T A planning assistance and D L T A means direct local technical assistance. Uh in our last meeting, I spoke quite a bit about what that actually is. Um but just to recap for the public, it is grant assistance that's given to us by our regional planning organization. Our regional planning organization is M R P C. Uh and as a practical matter, this is our opportunity to um to work on larger projects with professional assistants. Where um where it makes it so that we don't have to do everything on them ourselves. So in the last meeting, we talked about several things uh that the board was interested in uh as possibly being a D L T A project. Uh and just to to recap the list, we talked about update, modernize special permit program, uh or rather special permit site plan process. We talked about a more permanent update for our large scale solar voltaics bylaw. Uh we talked about revise, update our bylaw rule, our subdivision rules. Excuse me. And now my computer is frozen.
Uh the original list, that was part of the minutes from the previous time, maybe you would like to use that for?
Uh well, I just unfroze. So the next one is revise, update, modernize marijuana bylaw.
Okay.
Then the next one is revise, update, modernize wireless communications bylaw. Um then review and revise zoning for commercial uses, review and revise uses in all zones, review um if necessary, uh review and revise battery energy storage system best bylaw if rejected by the attorney general. And then there was review of aquifer protection bylaw. So what I wanted to do is I wanted to go to these and one by one just um just ask the board what you think goals for these things look like. Um that way I can put together a more coherent document to work with, with the town administrator and work with um M R P C. And it'll get us to the point where we're more ready, more ready to put in applications early. Plus, there's also some more D L T A money left for this year. So we might not be talking about next year, we might be able to get some of this funded this year. So I guess to start out the first one, um is uh we need to talk about what goals and deliverables would look like for a project where we updated and modernized the special permit and site plan process. So let's start out with goals. Um what I had thought, uh and rather what's been given to me by some of our stakeholders, specifically the select board and uh the economic development committee is that they would like to see us reduce the business, reduce the burden for businesses that are likely to have a positive impact on Hubbardston. Uh streamline the process to help with administration and remove some risk from the startup process of new business. Uh does anybody have any goals for that that they think are different? Uh things that we missed, stuff that should be added?
No, I think that pretty much summed it up.
Anything we can do to incentivize? Not that we have anything to give, but.
Some communities give them the first two years of tax rate or.
Pilot.
I say the first twenty five years, no.
Yeah, so I think it makes sense to add, look at ways of incentivizing desirable businesses. And even if this is stuff that we don't think is going to make the final cut, like now's the time to throw it out and have the discussion so we can vet it, so.
Right, discuss it.
I mean, things that develop, that that promise uh employment opportunities, job, job creation, um expanding the tax base, but that's kind of captured already in some of the suggestions made by stakeholders. Just incentivization.
We don't have a lot to offer.
I mean, incentivize somebody, but in exchange for a payment in lieu of tax possibility, I think there would need to be something on the give back, like you're gonna create ten jobs within one year or three years, whatever we find or maybe M R D S, M R S?
P C.
P C might help us through that process, but you know, if we give them an idea, they probably already have a template that works somewhere else.
Okay.
If we are going to do that, I think one of the things we need to be cognizant of is potential clawback clauses that need to be added into that. Because that has been a big issue with uh at least at the state level where incentives like that have been given out and they were never honored by the people who, to whom this was granted. And um and it was like nothing ever came out of the deal and.
What if a bond, you know, something?
It's either that or some other means by which you can be, yeah, exactly, so.
If you don't perform, then you pay.
So there is, there's an example that comes from Marlboro. So Marlboro loosened up their rules to be able to have a micro brewery in town. And then because they're a larger community, they have, their economic development arm isn't just a town committee, it's an actual like quasi-governmental corporation. And that um that organization went out and it applied for um urban development money. And it actually gave out two ten thousand dollar grants to people who were looking to come into Marlboro and open up breweries. And there's similar programs that were potentially eligible for, like rural development and um and some of those. So there are possibilities of doing stuff like that and we should definitely keep that in mind. Um okay, uh and what do we think the deliverables look like? To start the list, I had a revised passable bylaw in warrant article. But I think we probably need some uh a stakeholder engagement development process. Anybody have anything else for deliverables on that one?
I'm sorry, would you repeat that again? It was a stakeholder development process?
Uh stakeholder engagement.
Oh, engagement, excuse me.
Yeah. Stakeholder engagement process.
I think in addition to that, I would say is is uh look at some comps, I mean, you you brought a very good case, the one that was Marlboro. Uh it's it's comparable um bylaws, a review of comparable bylaws and um and and an understanding how how they have, what they, what results have come out of them.
Anybody have anything else for deliverables on that? Alright, so next down the list is uh large scale solar photovoltaic regulation.
Oh boy.
So we made a bunch of changes to this at the last town meeting.
Yep.
Um to try to to fix some of the issues related to setbacks and sightlines and stuff like that. So what's still out there for goals? What's still out there for stuff that we're trying to accomplish with it?
My understanding was is that there were numerous items that had been discussed amongst myself, Alice, I think you may have been involved in that too. And uh we just uh with this, with with the bylaw changes that took place uh in the prior year, we we did just a basic subset. I think we need to take that list again and utilize that as our springboard.
Yeah, I believe this is actually a draft, um draft bylaw from M R P C that had a lot of very substance, substantive changes in it. That might actually be something that um that we could do internally with some kind of subcommittee, just go through and look at what came out of the M R P C project and find out what's useful.
Yep.
Okay. And then for deliverables on that for now, I'm just gonna put for the moment a revised passable bylaw in warrant article.
Yep.
I think we have to do a little bit more of an assessment on that one. And it's probably, because we already had D L T A help, that's probably gonna get bumped down to the bottom of the list.
Hope or not, because I mean, if they have something that is good already that is comparable,
Yeah.
we might be able to have that as a low hanging fruit.
Well, yeah, if they just need a little bit more work.
Exactly.
Yeah, it'd be, I guess the question is about whether or not we need to ask for help, so. Any other thoughts on that one? Alright, so the next project is revise, update subdivision rules. Um this is something that uh that Mark talked to me a bunch about because he spent a whole bunch of time looking at trying to put together what projects with somebody in the sand pits would look like. And the reality of it was is there was just no such thing as a viable project because of the way our subdivision rules and the aquifer protection district, unless somebody did it as a forty B, it just, it's not possible to build something over there. Um so this is one that was brought up by the T A specifically because it's a large tract of um of unused land that's fairly developable that uh that uh is also a bit of a nuisance because every so many years or so, somebody um has an unfortunate accident out there uh taking advantage of the topography of the property. So it's been, it's been something that I've been interested in trying to see move towards a resolution within the next decade. But uh but it's something that could take quite a bit of work, so I wanted to throw that out to set the stage, find out what the board um what the board thinks about the idea of revising and updating the subdivision rules.
Should we look at it from the perspective of that particular project? And see if we need to use that lot as a means by which we can model the subdivision. I mean, the, I guess the question is, is we still don't really understand, I, at least I don't think I understand what can potentially be put there and what are the deficits that we have or the problems that we have in the bylaw that would prevent potential viable projects there? So it's like a chicken and an egg type of situation, right? And I would like to say, let's make the chicken be the, be the lot and have the chicken lay the egg, which should be in the bylaw. And ensure that we have a means by which we can do something that is productive and at the same time uh help us potentially with the portable housing component. So I'd like to also consider the how, the affordable housing uh angle of this year.
And wasn't there a discussion about possibly putting a senior center up there if we couldn't get it on the other property in town by the red field?
Yeah, there was. So one, the, yeah, there was a lot of issues. The biggest single issue to being able to do something out there is our five hundred foot dead end rule.
I couldn't hear that.
Our five hundred foot dead end rule.
Okay.
Um under our subdivision rule, if you can't have dead end longer than five hundred feet, uh regardless of what you put at the end for cul-de-sac or turnaround, no matter how wide it is. And the only way to access the uh the property that's now back on the market, the Marinelli parcel, uh is through property that's town owned, that uh that lot fifty seven Pitcherville Road. So ultimately, somebody buying that would have to put together a project with the town um that dealt with that issue, the the issue of access. The next issue that came after that is that whole area is covered by our aquifer protection bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
Uh which means it has a maximum density and and don't quote to this, somewhere around one bedroom, an acre. So that created a whole bunch of issues in trying to do anything with it either. Because that, that was put into place a long time ago, um when septic technology was different. So with what current technology is and what current standards are, it might be worth looking at and revising that. And that actually appears as a second project further down on the list that we're gonna talk about tonight. Because that's another one of the barriers to being able to try to do something out there.
Well, another thing I wanna throw out there, I don't know if anything's changed with ownership out there on property, the butts, the gravel, the sand pits out there. Is there any other access point from sixty eight to go through there? That's what they don't want this time.
Uh there's one other parcel that's owned by um someone appears to be a real estate investor, but other than that, there's not, there's not other practical access.
Because that would be the biggest thing to look at, because Pitcherville one's been a, it's been really hard on the people who live there to have access to those pits.
What's the acreage there?
Uh the lots on the north of Pitcherville Road, it's, I wanna say it's three hundred.
Quite a bit.
Yeah.
I don't recall the.
I, I, I.
As I know, we talked about zoning later on in your uh work, work order here. Um that's zoned residential aggie, correct?
Yes.
So, so, you know, I'm just trying to get out of the box of residential, septics, aquifer, roads, lots, and think about potential uh industrial park, commercial usage, lower septic demand presumably, something similar to the uh in Gardner on one oh one, on almost on Ashburnham line. I think it's called the Summit Industrial Park.
Mm-hmm.
And there's a, a series of, and it was a collaboration with the city of Gardner and I believe uh the state in some fashion, and this goes back twenty years, but you know, you know, a meandering roadway where you can put in, you know, some prefabricated steel or concrete buildings on slabs um to uh generate some light manufacturing uh and and maybe some industrial plots of five, ten acre pieces where they can, you know, lay out, like advanced cable ties is up there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh there's a couple of other pretty good sized plants up there
Yep.
that um, you know, bring in jobs. No demand on the schools. I'm just, you know, I don't know what the topography is. I know, I know it's, it's, it's a sandpit, but I'm, I, I believe it's very pretty, kind of leveled out there and.
And what's interesting is.
And if you get access from sixty eight, you got, you got, you know, commuting from route two.
Right.
So I, I, but we have a zoning issue there and that's part of what I was gonna talk about later is maybe, you know, we've got such a small commercial or commercial zone in this community that, you know, route sixty eight, you know, is particularly on the north end of town where we have not an interstate, but you know, a highway and a city and a community college and a hospital. You know, that seems to me to be a potential um development of some kind of commercial zone in that, on that corridor. And if this can tie into it, perhaps it could, it could be a little incubator for our town.
Many years ago, that was all commercial property.
Well, it isn't now.
Right.
So I'm just throwing out ideas here. I'm just, I'm just brainstorming. You guys get the votes.
But I. No, no, I think, I think you bring up a very good point. The question is, is I, was it commercial only on sixty eight though, right? So this particular piece of land probably would not be. The reason I think it's very interesting though, is that there's also three phase electricity that makes it up Pitcherville Road.
All the more reason to go to commercial.
Precisely, and that makes a lot of sense because it's one of the very few places that has three phase because they have the solar fields there.
Great solar, I mean, great cell phone coverage up in that neck of the woods now too.
It will be, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, so soon. I heard somebody.
Yeah, well, we're gonna come back to the uh the ad specifically about commercial uses. And that, that's definitely a change to how we've talked about before. I think we should explore a little more.
I, I still think that this is the place that we can utilize and look at as a means by which we can review the subdivision regulations. But I think we need to understand what can we put, what is it that we potentially would look as options to put there? And then the biggest question, and I think you bring up an excellent point, are we gonna go down the residential route? Or are we going to go down the light industry route or commercial?
There's enough.
I'm not, I'm not saying you can or cannot.
Could be zoned, that's whatever, give people the opportunity to present the.
You cannot, you cannot if, if, if it's not zoned properly.
Right.
Correct, correct.
That's the issue, right?
If we zone it to be allowed to be residential or commercial, then whatever ideas people would like to.
Mixed use.
Correct.
Because you have the power, the biggest thing would be the septic and all that, but that would be part of the discussion when we get into that piece.
Correct.
So one of, one of the biggest challenges that a lot of our peer communities are facing that we're just barely missing is M B T A zoning. Because um the Westminster train station is actually in Fitchburg, we're not brought into M B T A zoning. But if the line was ever extended, if it ever went to Gardner, uh which there has been some talk on and on, on and off about doing, it would pull us into an M B T A zoning, which means we would have to
Look at residential.
take an area of reasonable size and zone it to be multi-family housing, by right. And the spirit of the, the law is that that's supposed to be done in a place where you have reasonable access to the commuter rail. So if they were to build a station in Gardner, uh specifically in South Gardner, there's literally a bike lane running down sixty eight until you get to Hubbardston where it just abruptly stops. So they would be uh, they would be looking ideally to have that zoning happen in kind of that north central part of the town. So the sandpit's kind of the natural place for that to happen. So that's, that's one particularly long-term concern and depends upon what the state does, what happens with the next administration.
Yeah, these things, these things work like in slow motion.
Oh, yeah.
It could be a decade before that train get extended, look how long it took to get to Westy, you know, from, or for Watson Station.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
From, from, from Fitchburg.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I just throw it as a data point. It, it doesn't necessarily have to be a data point that steers us, it's just something to keep in mind.
Cross that bridge when we get to it.
Right. I'm gonna build a bridge first.
Alright, so any other, any other discussion on, on that? It sounds like it's something that we all have a lot of feelings about, uh but that we don't yet know enough about to be able to specify a clear deliverable. Even if a deliverable, well, I guess a deliverable could just be um an assessment of options. Because it's not, it's not just those parcels there, there's ones that are equally as large that are south of Pitcherville Road.
But again, should we, should we, should, should we look at options here or should we look at? And I'm, I'm, I'm not suggesting that options is not the right thing here. What I'm trying to say here is, is what type of options are we looking at? Are we looking at options from a, looking at lots in that particular area? Or are we looking at, at across our whole town? I, I wanna, I wanna note that I think we have a perfect opportunity again to use Pitcherville, the lots that are there, the Marinelli lots and so forth, as a way to kickstart this here with a very realistic viewpoint on how we need to model this here. If we go blue sky approach where it could be anywhere in Hubbardston, it just might be diluted and might not hap, nothing might really happen here. I'm, I'm, it's just a thought.
Okay.
Anyway.
So I'll note that for now.
Okay.
So next down the list is revise, update, modernize marijuana bylaws.
Holy boy.
So goals, I think the obvious one is get the larger tiers out of highly populated areas. And obviously, the folks that are in are currently grandfathered, but if somebody else was to come in and open up a tier eleven, which they could conceivably still do in our commercial zone, um although you'd just be moving closer to houses at this point, like it's having the benefit of hindsight, that doesn't make sense to me. Like, why wouldn't we wanna put that on like a two hundred acre parcel on the outskirts of town?
Right.
Right, that would make sense. But these first two areas we have, that was our first run by this.
Yeah, and we had to work with the bylaws that we already had.
Yeah.
Right.
I think the odor issue is partly the biggest problem as we have seen.
It's a lot.
And that has come as a result of it being in highly populated areas.
Yeah, so larger tier out of populated, smaller tier in central areas. Uh better thought out approach to odors.
Well, on that subject, was it ever straightened out with the state on the tax basis for all of us?
That is still pending. None of it looks great for the town.
Unbelievable.
As a matter of fact, I think the uh can have, Canada based control commission, just meantime, it's being it's under microscope for a lot of reasons.
Yeah, I'm uh frustrated as a citizen and a taxpayer and a policymaker that we were sold one bill of goods from the state and then after.
They lied.
Yeah, and then all of a sudden, oh no, you can no longer collect these fees.
Yeah.
Well, it was a court space, right?
Uh there were court cases, but I, I don't believe it came down as a decision. It was a public policy from the state house. So gotta work with what we got. So anything else on that um that, that we see as um as a goal?
I'm sorry, could you restate that?
Anything else to add to see it's cool?
To goals for revising marijuana bylaw?
I think we need to sit down, take another good half, look at it after we've.
So, I mean, I, I wasn't here obviously when that went into place, but from what I think I know, we were supposed to receive some sort of income from the growers.
And we are from one of them.
We are? Oh.
Yeah, there's, one of the growers.
Is it what we expected?
Well, it's, it's reduced, but one of the growers is. Well, it's, it's reduced, but one of the growers is on a community justice program or something like that where they do have to pay one percent. And the state is not unwinding that part of the program. So there's that. There's not the original community, community impact fees that were negotiated.
I'm just thinking, you know, we talked about a few minutes ago about incentivizing businesses to come into town. Well, you know. What if they don't perform, give the jobs that they promised type of thing, you know, like other towns might have some, you know, these places are offering us, or suggesting they're gonna get something. What happens when they don't? Some sort of, do they lose their license? You know, is there a bond that they can put up upfront instead?
Well, they're still paying taxes. They, they pay, they pay taxes, uh, at, at their, at their level. What they are not is, is they're not honoring the HCA, the host community agreement that they signed with, with Donald Hubbardson.
And so, so how do we enforce the H, the host community?
We cannot.
We can't anymore.
We cannot. That is, that is at a state level. And the host community agreements that, it's, it's not just Hubbardson. It's, it's, it's all communities where there are growers have been impacted by this year.
And ultimately the authority for that's what the select board knows.
Yep. We, we, we put, we put forth the bylaws as to where you can have the marijuana growing facilities, the layouts, the. All of the other types of things, but when it comes to the host community agreements, the financials, et cetera, that's not in our purview as part of the planning board. I wish it were.
Yeah.
Cause we would have a lot to say on that one probably. And it's interesting, several times where we have had meetings here. Uh, the, uh, public has voiced that, not understanding that we have no control over it ourselves. And therefore we have never answered that question, but have let the TA, who typically has been present in this meeting, answer that. Um, to, uh, to, 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 to the public when things like that have been brought up. Because again, it's not our position, so for, to, to argue or discuss.
And they're able to tie it also because there's nothing they can do with the, with the whole the state's put on it.
Yeah.
Precisely, precisely. But again, I mean, it's, it's not even for us to consider or to review or do anything about it because it's not in our.
Right, right.
Purview for review or bylaw, you comment as a body.
I stand enlightened.
And this whole thing came to light and we wanted to go that way and our whole thing was to bring more tax revenue into our town. And we were told this is what they make and what they charge and what they're gonna be paying us until the state changed all the rules.
Plus we had individuals who actually came in. Uh, from, one of those individuals, uh, who came in and made a very compelling argument for why. This was a good deal for town of Hubbardson and was actually talking dollar, was, was talking dollar amounts, which were. You know, hypothetical, I'm assuming on his side, but nonetheless, very, very enticing. Enough said though.
There's definitely a lot of history to that.
Yep.
So moving down the list is revise, update, modernize wireless communication bylaw.
Oh, boy.
So I have a couple of goals to start that one, which is modernized to match technology and have room to grow with technology. Uh, and. I also have address inconsistencies within the bylaw, which is a big problem. And then, uh, streamline co-location. Uh, equipment co-location. Because as it is, anybody who wants to put anything on one of those towers, it's a full special permit again, which, you know, is great for generating fees, but isn't really great for any other purpose.
Mm-hmm.
So, does anybody have any other goals or disagree with any of those goals or?
One thing I'd like to throw out there is part of the process, um, one thing I didn't agree with, I think was fair to the townspeople. Is when they talked about the balloon they put up over the tower that actually was gonna be, um. Is there anybody make that better for, for these people to see? I, I was okay with what I saw on the computer, but not everybody was comfortable with that. And I think if we're gonna make this. Part of a bylaw, we should make it easier for everybody to understand what it's gonna look like, um.
Is your concern in terms of how the bylaw is written?
I don't know how, I just threw it out there cause I want us to thi- think when we're thinking about it and I didn't want to forget about it.
Yeah.
When we're looking at it.
I think it's a great point because a lot of complaints did arise out of that. And I think, I, I heard two, two complaints. One was. Uh, the duration.
Mm-hmm.
And the second one was that, uh, there was not enough. Uh, how should I say this here?
A lot of time for people to.
No, there was, that was the duration, but it, it, it really had to do with, because we typically ask. The applicant to also photograph in multiple locations.
Mm-hmm.
How this looks and. People can say, well, I understand the applicant can say, I cannot put cameras in thousands of places. And I also understand that individuals who have a very individualized perspective would like to see how. How it looks maybe from their property's point of view. And I'm not sure even if tech, technology potentially does exist. I have to think that there is a way.
Well.
That you could kind of say, this is your house. If there is an object that is at hundred fifty feet at this location, that, this is what you would typically see.
Isn't that the point of the balloon test though?
It is, but it is not something that the individuals necessarily see because A, they're not there, B, it's not during the hours that they can see.
Yeah, I, I agree. The duration.
Google Earth, whatever, Google Streets.
What I'm saying though is that there's ways, I'm saying, there's ways nowadays, I believe there may be ways in which.
Well, it's about all.
There's ways nowadays, I believe there may be ways in which. Uh, you can create sort of like a line of sight visual from your property nowadays to say, hey, you live on, I happen to live in Hillwood Road. At this number. And if you're in your home, this is what you would see at that location, at that altitude. That's what you would see. And that would give me a better perspective. I can go into computer and I can log in. I can say, oh, wow, yeah, no, I don't see anything. Or. Yeah, I could potentially see that little red dot.
And that's, I just wanna throw it out there when we start working on this.
I agree with you from that perspective, yeah.
Cause I heard a lot of people complaining about that and myself, I was working, so I couldn't see it. I was okay with it cause I know what it's gonna be all about, but the average.
This goes.
Taxpayer can't, can't see or figure that out.
This goes along with the technology aspect in terms of how do you, how do you prepare, prepare and present the information to the public? In terms of how this will be potentially visualized from their perspective, either if it's at their home or if it's at their work location, et cetera.
Where they want, whatever.
Yep. I have.
Yep, please identify yourself.
Chair, Mike Stoll, Five Lombard Road. I was at some of those meetings and with the developer. And I also made myself available during the balloon test. Um, to Fran- Francois's point, I don't know if you can do it for, I, I mean. I think it's feasible, but I don't know that it'd be cost effective to be able to do it from everyone's property. And what I found is that people would say that, well, I couldn't see the test. Well, guess what? I walked up and down Main Street and got at higher points of elevation, like up on the library stairs and whatnot. And you couldn't see it in many, I see it and then it would go away for a hundred meters and then you could see it again. And what we do in construction, we, we do a pre-construction video. And I think you could do something similar here during the test and go, okay, this is the view, this is where the greatest population are. Do a video of it and then post it online. I even suggested that the developer could do a live stream of the test.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I think the duration, I think there's a prac- practical thing. We had it twenty-four hours. Well, at night, you know, there, there, there were some things that, um, obviously should probably be changed in that. I also went on the top of Mount Jefferson.
Mm-hmm.
Cause you know, you can see the church steeple there and whatnot. Well, I could see it. And as I drove down the hill, I could see it and then I couldn't see it. Mostly I couldn't see it, which, you know, I think the developer had some lines of sight and some elevations and say, well. Most people are not gonna see it, you know?
Right.
Um, so the one suggestion is have them do a live stream. Then people can log in if they want and see what's happening. And the other one is to do a balloon test video. From a major population area or a major route, trying to hit some of the high elevations. And if you can't see it from a high elevation, you're probably not gonna see it from a lower one.
So I would say explore visualization tools.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
There we go, yeah. Just so we don't forget that.
Is, is, I have a question. Is, is there something in our current bylaw or regulation for cell towers? That, um, addresses the amount of visualization that it shouldn't exceed? Is, you know, the, I mean, obviously no one wants to see it, I think, just human nature. Um, but we don't have a scale, in other words. If you can see it more than twenty percent of the. The, 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 the live stream locations or, or, you know, what, what's the cutoff? Is it, is it, is this, is this just an exercise? To check a box that there was a, uh, a balloon test or, I mean, what, how do you validate the, the success or not, non-success of a balloon test?
That's my thought.
That's some of the challenge of what's in our bylaw, because our bylaw just requires a twenty-four hour balloon test. It doesn't say to do anything with the consequences of other, than just post it to the public.
I'm not even sure what the point of it is, because if you're designating areas, you may put a tower and it's irrelevant if you can see it or not. You're saying that's the spot.
Well, that's my, kind of same, same thing. Is it, is it relevant at all?
Yeah.
That's, that was my thought, but.
The only reason it is relevant is, is it gives individuals a view and a perspective. As to what it is that they will potentially see. And that gives them the feedback to come back here. And then as part of the public comments, provide that feedback to us.
But it wouldn't, it wouldn't.
The planning board to make our assessment and decision.
It could change our life.
So it's, it's, it's subjective on our end.
It is, yeah.
But could that change our minds aboard that I wanna put a tower up here and it's approved for every other? Would we, would we deny that?
Well, if it.
I don't know that we could deny it, just based on.
That's what I'm saying. What if we want someone to put a water tanker?
If the bylaw says you may do something here in this spot, if you meet this criteria, public opinion is irrelevant.
Yeah, the, the challenge is with, um, particularly with cell towers with the TCA. It's not gonna be an actual controversy for us because frankly, the Vertex Tower is in the highest elevation spot. With the highest amount of visibility, like there aren't really any other spots that match that, like that was kind of a unique place. But you could have something that is fairly visible, that people really don't love, that the balloon test doesn't look good on. But that because it falls into the TCA carve-out, we pretty much get compelled to grant the permit. So that's something that could happen.
We're kinda in the weeds at this point though.
But the other thing we can do is, is we can provide.
Yeah.
I, I don't know that we need to keep, we're, we're in the weeds of the bylaw at this point. We should be saving this for a different discussion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we're in the weeds.
Right.
But just to, just to round this out, it does provide you also mechanisms that we do have a power of potentially to put requirements such as the camouflaging. And we do know that there are cell towers in Massachusetts that have been camouflaged that looked like trees.
Route Two were looking terrible when we did it.
But there's one there. I've always said, that's an amazing pine that they have there.
Yeah, it's great. Solitary ponderosa pine.
Yes, yes.
But it's there.
One great Massachusetts redwood. All right, so that, that's a pretty thorough discussion on that.
All right.
Uh, the next one is, uh, review and revise zoning for commercial uses. We need to look at some goals. And my first goal is I'd really like to see commercial zoning.
Hundred percent.
In some form, open up between Rieta Ranch and sixty-eight at a bare minimum.
Your point on, it was only sixty-eight?
Rieta Ranch and Gardner?
Yeah.
Yeah, you said sixty-eight, that's.
Yeah, I meant that.
Okay.
It used to be, I've been sixty-eight only.
But I believe, Mike, back in the day, commercial zone was all of sixty-eight area because the reason why they cut it back to the Gardner Cutoff Road. Was an individual had a lot of property on that. Would be the east.
East.
Had a lot of property, was gonna put an airport over there, which was not on, it had, it had touched sixty-eight, but that whole area was on, was more than that. So it was more than, we could bring that back, but it all come back down to a town vote. What to, and we really would have to sell this to everybody that would work and a lot of people don't want commercials on in sixty-eight cause they live there. Um, so that, that would be kinda hard to do, I think, at this point.
But I mean, it's interesting because, I mean, case in point is, is, you know, your photographic studio, it is, it is. It's been, it's been allowed to be there and we thought it was a great opportunity for us to have.
Yeah.
A, 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 basically like that.
But it was granted because of the use.
Absolutely. So what I'm saying is, is I think there is a tolerance for some commercial.
Right.
The question is, is the scale and the type.
Right, doesn't need to be a Walmart or McDonald's, but you can have an accounting firm or, you know, some, something like that.
If you're gonna be doing.
Right, right, right.
Correct.
Just, just driving that stretch of sixty-eight right now, probably fifty percent of the properties there are being used in some commercial form.
Hundred percent.
Whether it's permitted or not.
Hundred percent.
So like, it currently is the way that it is. So that the fact that the zoning doesn't match that is maddening to me. And there's also been recommendations out of, um, out of our master plan to do this. There's also been recommendations out of the Quabbe Municipal Partnership Report, which explored ways that towns could drive economic development to make it easier to pay for the school system.
Mm-hmm.
So like, this has been something that, that lots of people have flagged as an issue, at least in that area. And from what we talked about tonight.
I think there's other areas as well.
It sounds like we need to look at other areas too, and maybe some kind of phase.
We do.
We do have some really, we have some, we already have some areas.
Old sixty-eight.
We already have some areas in town that are, quite frankly, are very commercial.
Correct.
Uh, case in point are of, um, the old Westminster Road, uh, right where the railroad tracks are.
Yep.
There's a cabinet maker, there's.
Yeah, Westminster, yeah.
Yeah, and there's the cabinet maker there. There's somebody who has storage, I shouldn't say storage. Uh, they, they do some form of, uh, business there too. And then across the street is, also is Countryhand.
Correct.
And that, uh.
It was a pallet place then, yeah.
And they moved on it because of the railroad access. For the grain, for the grain.
Countryhand. Okay, I did not know that they did it because of that.
I believe so.
They moved out.
I believe the grain comes in there and they, they fill the silo with the train where it comes in.
Yeah.
Yeah. I've seen trucks go in there. I think they, I mean.
The trucks get filled there and go to the farm. So I, I don't know. That's, that's what I understood. If I'm wrong.
Yeah, this is citing.
Yeah, I do, right. It was, I mean, it used to, it used to be, uh, uh, which was his lumber.
Yes.
Years ago, which again was commercial.
And before that was Hilldo lumber. Cause the hills looked out of Landville.
Or Hillsborough. Yeah.
Uh, been commercial for many years.
So it sounds like that's a pretty popular project and if anything, uh, we generally would like to see the scope of that be wider. So the best bylaw, I'm just gonna hold that for now. So we don't necessarily need that discussion about that.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense. I don't think it would make sense for us to do anything with that.
Uh, the uses for all zones, I'm actually gonna hold that, uh, for now too. Because I wanna save more time for us to talk about the world bylaw. So that gives me what I need to, to work on this list a little bit more.
Aqua for protection.
Oh, yeah. I, I guess we should get to that one. So Aqua for Protection bylaw. Um, as it stands. Right now, uh, for goals, I would like to determine if there is a need. For it as it is.
A need for what?
The bylaw as it is.
And. Does it match current, what's technology? So what this is, uh, if you haven't looked at it recently, it's a bylaw in Hubbardston that adds additional protection to places. That could in the very long-term future, uh, be used as municipal water supply. Given. Given the expense of putting in a municipal water system and that it's been, uh, pretty ruthlessly shot down every time the conversations come up. Uh, I think the time scale that we'd be looking at for that would be like fifty years. So I guess there's kind of a question on whether or not we should be making. Policy decisions on that large of a timeframe. Um, because. I don't. I don't think there's gonna be municipal water in Hubbardston in my lifetime. I don't think there's gonna be municipal water in Hubbardston in my lifetime, and I'm only four years old.
I don't think so either.
You never know what tomorrow's gonna bring.
Uh, if it was a giant grant from the federal government for twenty million dollars, we would still have a tough time passing it because we'd have to get the town to put one the other.
Mm-hmm.
And there's better things we can do with the twenty million dollars.
Yeah.
A lot of people in town have bad water. Going to the water filter business.
Well, and.
Let's ask Gardner how their water is.
There's a whole reason for that, it used to be really good.
And a divergence of opinions on this is a good reason for it to be something that we talk about to study and look at some more, so.
My biggest thing on things like that, and all the years I've been on the boards, it's always good to keep something like this in your footprint of your your agendas or your items you wanna review, so you don't forget it. Because what happens after over time, it goes back on the back burner and you never think of it again, but it's always on your old business. Whatever you wanna call this, a footprint, you don't lose it. Uh, and I think it's important to keep that in mind, because twenty-five years from now, things might change. Um, and it'd be good just at least to have something.
Well, and as it is, uh, according to Mark, this is one of the biggest impediments to being able to do anything in either the sand pits uh, as bylaw as it's currently written.
Well, we can modify it, so we don't hurt anything, or make it doable, but all I'm saying is keep it somewhere. If we decide to get rid of it and it don't votes for it, that's fine, but don't totally lose it.
That's interesting, because that's one of the very few places where I don't think there's a lot of land under the watershed protection, the state watershed protect, protection.
Yeah, but the north side of it is, uh, wellhead protection area for Fitchburg's water supply.
Fitchburg?
On the, on the.
Gar, excuse me.
I was gonna say, because the Fitchburg one is on the west, on the western side.
Minister Road, and Hilldo, um.
On the new Westminster Road, there's a big reservoir there.
In Lombard. The old one, I think, yeah.
You had, I thought, last time also, uh, indicated you wanted to include regional trails and interconnectivity planning? Is that something that you wanted to, was that part of a bylaw, or was it just simply something you wanted to do with MRPC?
I do, but that's something that's marching forward on its own, and Open Space is currently doing quite a bit of work on it. So, I don't think we need to look at it, uh, unless it turns into something that we need to sign off on for the DLTA grants.
So have we advertised for?
We have. Uh, we had one person who was gonna come interview, they didn't make it to the interview, we're now looking to partner with neighboring towns, so, well, we'll see how it goes.
So there was discussion at the last meeting on that topic, where the town administrator was gonna discuss this with Gardner, I'm, I'm sorry, Rutland? Has there anything come from that?
Yeah, the discussions have been continuing.
Okay, so it's still possible.
Yep, that's still, that's on the table.
Fixed number of hours, that would be shared.
Yep, we'll come, we can come back to under administrative matters. So the next thing on the agenda is the discussion of the recommendation from the Agricultural Advisory Committee for rural enterprise overlay zone. And now, this was loaded into, um, into the drive, and I don't wanna do a deep dive into it tonight. I just wanna get everybody familiar with it, and we'll do a deep dive into it next time. Uh, but what this is, is it is an overlay that, uh, that's been submitted to us uh, to take a look at. And, uh, the overlay as it's currently drafted includes pretty much the entire town except for Pine Crest.
Yeah.
Yeah, I noticed that, that's interesting.
Oh, okay.
It's everything except for Pine Crest.
Yeah, and there's, there's a couple of reasons.
Good reason for that.
There's a couple of reasons for that, one being Pine Crest by rule specifically forbids home-based businesses. Um, and then the other one is, is Pine Crest has non-conforming lots. So the, the selection criteria that I gave Mark to draw this map was exclude areas where home-based businesses, we know, are prohibited by rule, and where there's a sub-development, where all of the lots are non-conforming.
I believe the covenant attached to the deeds on the home business was removed. I don't believe that's there anymore, so I think we changed that about ten year, ten, eleven years ago. Let me, let me get a copy of it, just, I don't wanna state it officially, so.
Yeah, so, the, the reason we, we did this as an overlay is because we we figured that in the process of getting feedback from folks in the town, there might be areas where it turns out maybe this doesn't make sense. And like, in a place where you have a bunch of small lots that are non-conforming, or where there might be an HLA rule or something like that, it might be one of those places. And we, we want it to stay passable, so, to the extent that a neighborhood can be carved off the map in order to please a stakeholder group to get more votes for it, I think we should be willing to do that. But that's why we started with essentially the whole town, which is that one neighborhood.
The Poles.
So, uh, the purpose of this is to be consistent with the open space, the recreation plan, right-to-front bylaw. There's a whole bunch of stuff, uh, and it's specifically designed to encourage ecotourism and agrotourism and farm accessory uses. So the uses that it talks about, and the uses that it enables are all uses that fall into that category. And, uh, we'll talk about it in a bit, so the applicability of it uh, will be to the overlay zoning district, which as of the current moment, is pretty much the entire town except for Pine Crest. Uh, because of the non-conforming lots and the reasons we had said before. So there are some definitions that are in here, and these definitions essentially all come down from state statute like agriculture, agrotourism, farm, farmer's market, non-exempt use, open space property, all of those things, they all come from state law. Next thing is, is, uh, the permit procedures, so, uh, the planning board will act as the review body for site plan review and special permit applications under this. This, uh, this new, uh, I guess zoning, zoning package, or rather zoning overlay. Uh, if somebody has a use that is allowable by right under this rule
They already do.
Their, uh, their approval would just be to submit to the building inspector uh, notifying of the proposed use thirty days to commencing the use, so that the building inspector can make a ruling on it. Uh, there are still some articles from the regular zoning that apply, uh, like dimensional zoning uh, specifically in the RA district. So like setbacks, lot size, those kinds of things, they all still apply. And then what we did here is we, we came up with a bunch of allowable uses. Um, and I think it's important to talk about the context here, because this is a committee that was made up of myself, two EDC members, and three farmers. So this came out, uh, as farm-friendly and farm-forward as possible. So I'm expecting that there's gonna be some conversation about some of these items, but this is what the farmers are asking for. This is what their position is, so, uh, it's worth keeping that in mind.
That's a clarification on item number L, horseback riding. I have nothing against horseback riding, I'm just trying to understand, are we talking about stables, or are we talking about being able to have trails? Or what, what specific, or was that not even discussed?
Uh, that would be uh, well, it's broken into the separate categories as we get further down. So commercial stables, you actually can't restrict by a special permit because it's an agricultural use.
No, but I meant this, is when you say, when you have it here as a, okay, so these are just examples of allowable, non-exempt agritourism uses include but are not limited to the following, horseback riding.
Yeah.
So is it, is it just that people can ride their horses anywhere in town?
Yeah.
Correct.
It's a clarification, and that essentially is the state of the law as it already is.
Which is fine, I just wanted to have an understanding about what, what this really meant, okay, so it, it's literally horseback riding.
Yeah, so, uh, a lot of these uses are things that people are already doing, and many of them are are things that were already required to allow under the state law. So like fruit, you pick, agricultural museums, living history farms, uh, wine making. Wine making is actually protected as agriculture, uh, on its own, separate of brewing or distilling.
Yeah.
Viniculture.
I wanted to ask you about the distilling, uh, point, and that is, is the distilling operation obviously has to also include proper licensing, right?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Yeah, so this, this is just zoning, this has no impact on what goes on with the health department. This has no impact on what goes on with the select board, because somebody would actually have to have an alcohol license.
Correct.
Uh, or it goes on with the ABCC, it doesn't impact any of those things, it just makes a legal to build the structures or, uh, build the facilities for it. And the reason, specifically for wine making, cider or beer making and distilling uh, either grown or prepared on-site, is because that's part of the state requirement for being a farmer brewer or a farmer distiller, or, um, a farmer cider house. And that's, that's meaningful, because.
Looking at that.
It's, it's the last part in GEHNI.
Thank you.
Um, it's, it's a separate licensing permitting pathway that you can only do if you fall into that farmer class.
Oh, okay.
As opposed to being like a regular commercial distillery or a regular commercial brewery.
I like the fact that it's not grown and prepared, but it's the or component, I think that's an important element here.
Yep, well, we, we track state law on that, so that's why it says that, so ice cream, uh, outdoor recreation, that's the passive section. Art galleries, sculpture, beekeeping, agricultural stores. Most of this stuff through this section here is all stuff that's already allowed by state law, we're just clarifying sale of agriculturally-produced products. Greenhouses, you can't require a special permit for that, consuming agricultural or food products, and garden tours. All things that you're essentially allowed to do under state law that we're just clarifying.
Just to clarify, the greenhouses, and I guess I'm, I guess I'm nitpicking here, um is, is, this is, does that include commercial greenhouses, like the ones that would be potentially utilized also under the marijuana?
Marijuana is excluded, but other than that, commercial greenhouses are actually included in the Davis Amendments.
I, I, I remember that, but the, this specifically would exclude it for.
Correct.
Do we, so we need to maybe make that distinction, or is it already made, obviously?
That's defined in the state definition of agriculture.
Got you, thank you.
That's something we can talk about more, get into a nitty-gritty.
Yeah, yeah, there's definitely getting, getting more into the nitty-gritty, but, so the definition of agriculture, and this, this is an important drafting point because it's a place where, um, where there's less here in order to be more. There's a definition of agriculture in general law, chapter forty-eight, section three, that goes in and talks about agriculture and how it's not commercial marijuana cultivation, and how it includes, um, uh, silviculture, aquaculture viniculture, all of those cultures. And it's just incorporated by reference, because the state tinkers with that. And we don't wanna put something here that's gonna get thrown out because the state tinkered with those definitions.
Mm-hmm.
So, we kept all of that stuff out of here, to have this be something that the Attorney General won't kick out when it goes through because there was a change. So this next section here is allowable uses for sufficient acreage, and these are things that would be higher impacts on the neighbors. So like corn mazes, uh, tours and trail systems that are available to the public. Petting and feeding of farm animals, like a petting zoo, hay rides, catch your own Christmas trees. And here's one where, where we're gonna have to discuss it, because frankly, the committee just kind of hunted. Special events, and we don't have to discuss it tonight. We're gonna end up discussing this a lot, we don't have to discuss it tonight, and I'd like to get some more feedback from the community. So by right would be special events, weddings, receptions, or private parties for a commercial purpose where the events are held less than four times per, per year, or are expected to have a maximum capacity of three hundred and fifty attendees. And that was specifically drafted that way, because, um, with the exception of a couple craft fairs, that made it so that like, regular, like alpaca get-togethers and stuff that happened in Hubbardston didn't rise to the special permit level. Uh, whereas somebody setting up a, like, commercial wedding venue or something like that would rise to the special permit level, so you see the other side of that in section C, which is the special permit section, where if you have an on, on-farm restaurant, that's gonna be a special permit. If you have special events, or concerts, or festivals, that are on the other side of that number, where it could be more than three hundred and fifty people or is being held more than five, four times a year, you need a special permit. Rural campground, lodging other than bed and breakfast, because bed and breakfast is already allowed by right in the entire town.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so what that would be is if somebody was setting up like cabins.
Mm-hmm.
Or something along the lines of that. Uh, so that, that is actually, a special permit is already required for multiple structures, there's not a single lot in Hubbardston. So that keeps it consistent with their bylaw. Maybe that's something we need to look at in the long run, but it's, it's not something that we were gonna change in this. Cause like, if you're trying to build a detached garage, you have to get a special permit in Hubbardston in a lot of cases.
Mm-hmm.
If, uh, if you have a non-conforming lot and a bunch of other things. Non-motorized active recreational uses, including but not limited to disc golf, zip lines, mini golf. Arguably, disc golf doesn't belong there, but it's, this is the first cut out of. Um, so, we, we tried to streamline the special permit process a little bit by saying uses allowed by special permit. Uh, won't have to do some of the analyses that are required under the regular special permit to try to make it easier and make so they just have to do a site plan, and like, the original narrative. And then there's the severability clause, and that's just generic. So what we don't have in here and it's really all the stuff that we cut out of this that took the most time is we don't have a separate standalone site review process, because really, that should be done in a separate project. And I didn't think the Ag Committee, Ag Advisory Committee should be writing the site plan review requirements for Hubbardston. So we didn't do that there. Uh, we, we left that to the rules as we see. And then we also didn't put a clause in there saying all other uses prohibited. And the reason we did that is because when you look at the list, it talks about these things being examples, and there's also open-ended classes.
Mm-hmm.
So, like, one of the open-ended classes here is, um services directly supportive of agriculture. Um, so agricultural consult, so we used EG instead of IE, EG meaning for example instead of IE being like this. Um, so for example, agricultural consulting, farrier, saddlery, tack and equipment, service of repair. Now, there are other services directly supportive of agriculture, and I actually ran a bunch of examples through, um through ChatGPT to find out what kind of wild crazy stuff we could come up with. And like, something that could come under that would be like crop dusting. But, and you'd be like, oh no, what if somebody opened up a crop dusting business in Hubbardston? Well, first of all, that's not gonna happen, like, we don't have agriculture at that level here, like, this is in Iowa. So I think there's natural economic limitations to that, so I don't think we have to go um, we don't have to go crazy bookending a lot of the stuff. Plus, we can tinker and evolve this rule as, as situations come up. So, there, there was no way to be as enabling as possible to the farm folks and to the, uh, the open space landowners, where, where we could have limited all other uses excluded. So it, it just, it didn't make it out, we, we can talk about that at a planning board level, but it didn't make it past the stakeholder group.
I mean, I think this is a great, uh, i- i- it's, it's, it's an excellent work, and I really, really appreciate what you've done here. I think there's some, there's some review that needs to obviously take place, I, I have a couple of things that come to mind. Uh, I mean, just even the map that you have at this point in time, which is pretty much all green except that little section there. Uh, I think that you may have to carve out items such as, uh, places where. Uh I think that you may have to carve out items such as uh places where you know, you have to stay on land and places like that, you can actually not do things like that there. Um and I would also indicate you have some things in here, and we've had some some issues in cases that have come in front of the uh conservation commission very specifically regarding to some uses that you're actually, you know, putting in here, which I think are you know, in the right place, makes perfect sense, like disc golf, uh where we have individuals who attempted to put a disc golf uh uh location in a in an area that was protected by D C R, things of that nature. So we need to be very careful how we word things once we get into the nuances of how this final wording needs to be done. Primary reason is is I think a lot of people may simply say, oh, we can do disc golf, not necessarily.
Well, I think if we wanna modify the map like you discussed, cut all the areas out.
Yeah. Well, there's not only that, but you have to also keep in mind that even though you own, say, for example, property that is waterfront on a pond.
Mm-hmm.
You still have restrictions up to X number of feet out from the border of the pond where you can actually not do anything.
Correct. Correct.
Uh et cetera. So there's there's things like that that I think really do. I I really think this is a great, great job, and I really take uh uh you know, take my hat off on on the work that you guys did, and uh you've done all the heavy lifting here.
Yeah, it's also important to note that um that for some of these purposes here, um I think there'd be some kind of discussion about whether or not you were doing it for commercial usage or not because like, for example, hay rides. I throw a couple bales of hay in the bucket in my tractor all the time and just drive my son up and down the driveway.
Mm-hmm.
Zoning has absolutely nothing to say about my ability to do that, so.
Not disagreeing.
Well, some of that I think we'll have to look at. The um the other good news is um we were able to claw back some of the money that was budgeted to us for M R P C work, so we have it available for us to have a legal review ahead of time.
No.
And um and a couple hours for places associates to uh to take a look at this too. So we actually have cash to pay for that, which.
Awesome.
Very good.
Would be nice. Uh and we can also use that to do a legal review on some of our other bylaws. Um I've been told we're gonna have a tough time getting more money allocated to us for two years, so we need to make it last for a little while. Try not to spend it all this year, so.
That was a nasty one, Russell.
So we'll um we'll see. So my my goal for this is to have a more thorough, more thoughtful discussion of this uh next meeting. And then um at that meeting, schedule a uh a public information session. Uh essentially do it as a planning board meeting, but we'll invite the select board, the E D C. Um we'll invite the public, and I'll put together a slide deck on why we did, what we did, what we're trying to do. Because ultimately, what we're trying to do with this is where we're trying to encourage businesses to help the tax base. And we're also trying to incentivize people to find productive uses for farms and for open space.
Mm-hmm.
Because if there's productive uses for farms and open space, it's less likely it's gonna get divided up into two acre lots and turn into big mansions, which really hurts our tax base.
Mm-hmm.
So um I think it's in, I think it's in all of our interests to try to make something like this work, particularly from a taxation standpoint. And also, this is all just stuff that is relatively low impact to the neighborhood around them, and they're just fun things to have. Like, how awesome would it be if Hubbardston had like a farmer microbrewery? I think that'd be great, like to not have to drive over to Barry to go to Stone Cow or. They're they're all, they're all types of businesses that really add to the community element of the town, so. Uh I think there's a lot of opportunity here. So, does that sound like a reasonable plan to everyone?
Yes.
So we'll schedule for the next meeting, and then at that one, we'll schedule the public input.
Yes.
My goal is to get thi- at this at a minimum on the um on the Springtown meeting. And this is, this is arguably the biggest zoning uh package or biggest change to our zoning in a generation. So it's, I think it's in a very friendly, very palatable way because it it spreads it out, it helps our farmers, and it goes for the types of businesses that people like. But um but we're all gonna need to work to build a consensus on this. Once we have a consensus among ourselves, we have to work with the town to help make sure this passes. There's gonna be a lot of people from a lot of the other boards and committees that are pretty heavily invested in this to try to make something happen. So, looking forward to this and looking forward to something moving on with it. Alright, so back to the agenda, administrative matters. Are there any other questions on that? Administrative matters, uh Nate and I are expecting to be meeting with some of our neighboring towns uh about getting a part-time planner along with administrative support from the planning board. For now, Mark is filling in with administrative help, um but uh but we probably only have him for a month or so. He's doing it part-time after hours. Uh matters not recently anticipated by the chair. Anybody have any?
Uh I I don't know because on the on the previous one, it's the it's the uh the, when will we discuss the uh Nate's email regarding a uh budget? Or uh the page or?
I'll put that on the next meeting.
Next meeting, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, uh well, I guess to to fill in that, I had sent an email to everyone. I think I sent it out today, so I didn't put it on the agenda.
No, that makes sense.
Um about uh budget planning for twenty twenty-five for the planning board.
Yeah.
And historically, the planning board's been pretty quiet about asking for it. I think we need to be pretty noisy about asking for it, so.
I mean, one thing that I think we have had in the past, we always had significant amounts of money seen available in our purse. Uh for some reason, that number has decreased significantly. I don't know if the, or the revenue has just dried up, or if, you know, wh- what what was the source of that revenue that we had that allowed us to have a larger budget or purse that we could always utilize versus where we are at this point in time? I think a review of that might be just worth noting and I have to bring it up.
Having sat on the finance committee prior to my role here, the school has been more and more and more uh the pull
Mm-hmm.
on just about all municipal departments and budgets. Most co- most departments, if not all, have reduced their their um their budgets uh or held them flat um for the last two to three years at least. So, you know, if you're not using it and there's no justification for it, you know, the money's been diverted to the schools.
Yeah, no, but we were, we were, this was self-funded. This was, this were funds that were coming in.
Oh, this wasn't tax dollars?
Yeah, we have a revolving account where we get fifteen percent of the um
Money's deployed.
of the fees we collect.
So if somebody comes in and says, you know, here's a check for a thousand dollars, but fifteen percent out of those thousand.
You get it, okay. Okay, well, if we're not getting any projects, then you don't have a fee.
Vertex is what happens.
And you think so. Vertex?
Yeah, we we spend money on vertex out of our budget because we ended up having to pay for some of the legal fees.
Yeah. Gotcha.
And we ended up having to eat some of the consulting fees on that.
Okay. We always had a, I I remember from the days where Alice was the chair.
Yes, we had money.
We had, we had significant amount of money that was available to this board, and we could utilize it to do certain things. And it was to do some studies or to utilize it for other things and.
Oh, so the fee that we got from a from an application and an example wasn't wasn't commensurate just for the work associated with that project?
The.
Correct. Correct.
So.
You could, it was going into a.
Fund.
A fund.
C P C funding was where most of that came from for affordable housing. That was actually funding for the Affordable Housing Committee, not the planning board that paid for those studies.
For some of the studies that we did for uh what?
For the Affordable Housing Project, for the letter mediation, for all that stuff.
Yeah, but I do recall earlier that uh and I did not.
Didn't we have a budget from the town budget?
No, I don't think we ever did. I just remember from, I mean, I, my recollection, I've been here only for four years on this particular board and then one year as an associate member.
No.
But I did recall uh it was either Alice, I think it was Alice who was mentioning, no, we have a good, we have a good solid uh uh
Budget.
Budget here, or not budget, but reserve in 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 our, in our uh in our pool here, and so
Yeah.
uh that seems to have dried up, and that's just what I'm bringing up, and I think that maybe the.
It's.
Well, there should be an accounting for that, I mean.
We have about seven thousand dollars now.
Yep.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
Oh, you you made it sound like we had so much less.
Well, we did for a while.
Okay.
But we we were able to claw back that M R P C money.
Oh, because of the M R P C money.
And then, and then there was about um about nine hundred dollars that we just got off the industrial tower application.
Okay.
But um but the vertex application and everything that went on with that depleted almost everything that we had.
Yeah.
Going to.
Because I know that we don't.
But does the town, does the town auditor audit that account?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the.
Because there should be no question to. Right, right.
Oh, no, no, I'm, I'm not questioning, I'm not questioning where the money is. It's uh I'm questioning more.
To you where the money.
I am, because you don't know.
No, no, what I'm, no, what I'm questioning is is uh how come our kitty got so much rapidly s- uh I'm sorry, has not been able to keep up?
Well, it also.
Where we had a nice reserve as well before.
I believe it also has to do with how many applications we get and how many fees we charge.
It does.
Correct, and it's like, but for some reason, I thought that we've we've had some, we've had a significant amount of
So that that makes that equal now.
items that have come through here, and I thought for some reason or another that we would be, we would be, I'm not saying flush with money, but.
Yeah, we've only had two items that almost.
It's it's just, yeah, it's the vertex and the.
Special permits. Industrial Tower.
The industrial tower.
So when you do invoice on invoices on your agenda, those be, get paid from this account that you're discussing?
And they could have his one, what's one.
Uh.
And when you pay places associates for a review of some sort?
That's been. That's been a little unclear. Uh I, the the town did definitely take some money out of that to pay those accounts. Industrial Tower deposited money with the town, uh and the town accountant was keeping track of that, and that apparently was kept in an account separate from our revolving account. So I just got notice of what was left in the industrial tower account and what was gonna be deposited in our revolving account this week, so.
That's supposed to go with our money, isn't it?
Yeah.
And that's the nine hundred you were mentioning?
Yeah, so uh I think some of that has been bounced through different accounts just because there's been so much turnover in the office.
Okay.
And nobody there is now what they've been doing for a while.
They're to us, tell them.
Okay. But uh I can't say that.
See it in the Barry News now. I mean, really, this is no way to run an operation, and I'm just sorry, I'm not saying anyone's doing anything underhanded, but these these dollars should be clearly accounted for with no question or ambiguity where any nickel goes.
Mm-hmm.
Uh you talk about, you know, voting four or five people to pay a uh eighty-seven dollar bill last week, we must have spent twenty minutes on that piece. Um and you're talking, when Alice was in, we had a, you know, a good amount, whatever that might mean. I take it to be thousands, a good amount, not twenty or fifty dollars.
Sure. No, no, no.
There there should be no question where those dollars are.
And and we do see.
And I would ask, you know, without having the right to make a motion, that you people consider asking for an accountant, accounting from the town accountant on 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 all the money that we've received, just to answer these questions for the public's benefit.
I think the point I was trying to make was is that in the past, we've never asked the town administrator, the town for monies to be added into our revolving account because we had sufficient in our own account in order to be able to pay for the certain things. It sounds, however, that this time around, we may consider requesting some monies to come from the town so that they can pay for some of the services that we think and deem are necessary.
Well, since I've been on, we've never had that issue. We've always had plenty of money in our account.
Hey, precisely.
We should, we should put this on as an agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's correct. We shouldn't debate it.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
Elaborate it.
Maybe you could put some feelers out for some more information so we.
Yeah, I'll follow up with the town minister on it. But yeah, I can say that there were
Yeah.
Yeah.
there were no written financial process that got transferred when Mallory left. Like, there was nothing written down about how money handling for um
Right.
for permits and such came in and were supposed to work. Like uh what Mark put together a process, which is what we're currently using now. None of that stuff from the before times is preserved.
Great.
Alright, so moving down the list.
Public comment.
Public comment.
Yep, do we have any additional public comments?
Sure.
Mike Stahl, Five Lombard Road. Um there was a comment earlier about uh water and maybe sanitary sewer, I'll mention that. Those together. Um in another state, I worked for a water agency, and municipalities or political subdivisions would say, oh, we're never gonna have town and municipal water. Well, things regionalized and the state E P A came in and ordered these political subdivisions to install either water systems, you know, water distribution systems and or sanitary sewer collection and treatment plants. So we may say, never say never. Um and somebody I've heard in the past says, well, we've got the Ware River, and the criteria for that is so high, the standards, that it it'd be infeasible, but Barry and Hardwick both have plants on the Ware River. And I know that's down river from where the Quabin Aqueduct is, but um I I saw it happen, so I just caution us to maybe do a little research into what the state law is in other municipalities that are, you know, further east of us, and have they been ordered by our state E P A or federal E P A? Where I worked, it was always at the state level, although we'd get federal grants to sometimes, you know, augment the state grants to install these systems, or the federal money came through the state.
Yeah.
So I just mentioned that and thank you for.
Good point.
Can I make a comment on that? I bring up a very interesting point, and I I mentioned this here because uh
Sure.
it may sound like there's there's an association with this here, but we had candidate site yesterday, and the two gentlemen who were here uh uh representing their candidacy for the Senate. Uh I actually did a little bit of research on a couple of candidates, and even the candidate who did not show up in terms of what they have put out in legislature and so forth. Amongst one of the bills that popped up as a recent two thousand twenty-three bill is a review of well waters in rural areas, and it's related with regards to the issue of P F A S. And the concern that uh P F A S has brought in our rural communities and how to remediate and how to go about doing the remediation in the event that P F A S is found. Because the cost can be significant, and there's no easy mechanism for uh for the remediation of that. Um and at the state legislature, I think they're actually looking at ways that potentially they can help individuals who are suffering as a result of P F A S being found in well water. And so I just bring that up as a very good example that if this became prevalent in a town,
Mm-hmm.
that the cost may be so prohibitive to remediate at the individual level where they might simply say, we'll do it at the town level. So I, just 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 a case point.
Mm-hmm.
That's very good.
But thanks for bringing it up because that's a good example.
Okay. I will be uh, I'll be delighted if it ever turns out that folks on in the state house care that much about what happens to the people in Hubbardston, but.
You never know.
Yeah, you never know.
Well, it it is, it is making waves. Let's put it this way, maybe it's a ripple, but it is actually being.
Yeah.
I know that, for example, very recently, and I just sort of, I apologize for taking a little bit more time here, but the the town, the city of Cambridge, very recently, uh the last year, they actually shut their water plant on Fresh Pond because uh they had to install P F A S filters. For a period of time, they were receiving their water from the M W R A.
Hmm.
So there is, there's a recognition that P F A S is a problem. And they understand and know that it is not only a problem at the city levels, but obviously it's happening also at the rural levels.
Alright, any uh any further comments?
I'll make a motion, major.
Have a second.
I'll make the second, sir.
Here in the first and the second, non-dated, non-debatable, call it a vote.
Steyer, aye.
Williams, aye.
Devaly, aye.
Monroe, aye. We are in charge, it's.
Yeah. Peter, aye?